I'd like to call this our new scheduled meeting. This is the newly posted, under oath, city commission of order. And at this time, I'd like to call upon Commissioner Leal to lead us in education.
Now your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve you this day. We ask for your blessing over this meeting of our city commission. Allow us to lean on you for wisdom and allow us to do things that are right by your eyes. Please watch over the employees of the city and continue blessing this city. We ask that you watch over the family of Jean Allen in their time of loss. All these things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the great law of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. We're glad to have everyone here. We should have a short meeting tonight, we'll see. Item one is the announcement, a public announcement of events.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Tomorrow night, there's going to be a new views of historic downtown Harlingen exhibit opening. There'll be free exhibit at the Art Center. The event will actually be from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30, and there'll be contest winners announced at 6:30. Thirty-four photos were submitted during preservation month in a contest organized by Downtown Harlingen. So there's going to be a lot of detailed looks at some of the buildings, streetscapes, and architectural designs, so we hope there'll be a good turnout for that. And that exhibit will continue through June at the Art Center, so we hope the public takes in that opportunity. On Saturday, June 14th, there'll be the next Blues on the Hill. There'll be some spectacular talent there again, and they'll have Johnny Harper and the Hard Times Blues Band as the special opening to guest. And again, the public is welcome. It's no admission fee to get in to soak up a lot of culture. And for those who keep track way in advance, the next Blues on the Hill is August 16th. So you may want to put that on your advanced calendar. Also, in terms of arts and entertainment, there'll be Valley Kings of Comedy coming to the municipal auditorium on June 28th. As you can see on the poster, there's some top entertainment with Raymond Orta, Mario Superstar Salazar, John Stringer, and Sonia Trevino will be there. And tickets are available for $10 and $20 by calling 216-5990 or going online to make arrangements to get your seat in advance. Also, we've got Freedom Fest, the second annual event coming up July 4th and 5th at Long Sea Hill Fair Park. The Miss Stars and Stripes pageant is going to be a part of that. It's for young ladies of all ages, up to 29 years, and there are some specifications on what kind of attire or fashion statement to make, and you've got to bring one five-by-seven headshot photo that day. They're asking contestants to pre-register, and the fee is $20. I believe there's an extra amount you pay if you register on the exact date or don't register in advance. For more information, the number's 956-454-3065. So again, at our next meeting, we'll have more information about what's coming up at I also wanted to announce that we just got this information in today that the grand opening for that Harlingen Rotary BART Park is going to be Friday, June 20th at 1:30, and that's located over at Victor Park. They're going to have dog treats, they're going to have human treats, they're going to make an extravaganza, and of course, the Harlingen Rotary Club did a lot of the fundraising for that, so they'll be well represented, and I'm sure the commissioner and the public will be invited to that. That's another free event. I've also had a lot of calls from some families still interested in the summer recreation programs, and I've been directing them to go to our website and call Parks and Recs. There's still a lot of fun to be had for our kids while they're out of school. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item two, presentation of certificates of appreciation to performers who participated in the Mayo celebration. Let's see. Angela together. I'd like to invite Sanchez to come and join us down here. I'd like to recognize those that helped to organize and participated in some form or fashion or form at the sake of the Mayo celebration. We'd like to first recognize Connie Solis, have her come up here, and Juan, who were the kind of the backbone of the committee organizing the great celebrations that we want to recognize them for. (applause) Sort of our unofficial auxiliary here. They do lots and lots of volunteer work for City Harlingen. They particularly feel involved in this program, so we want to recognize them and thank them for all they do.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, for attending that event, and most of all, it was a team work effort. Our district, our assistant city managers, and everybody that attended and helped us to put it together, especially Mr. DeRena, who's always there to see what is needed and of course, you, Mayor, for approving these events so in order to be a community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our Commissioner, of course, I'm sorry, would you say thank you, guys? We don't need to say thank you.
It's Free Veri Al in the...
And...
There he is.
Thank you, Scotty Purdy.
He's always a great performer and generous with his time to come out and help us out with that celebration.
I just wondered, as you know, that after we finished playing there, I always play for the city of Harlingen, and I live from Santa Maria, but I consider Harlingen my second home.
You're always welcome in Harlingen. (applause) Are you a Texas DeHano fan?
Yeah, I do.
You're always DeHano.
Thank you really for coming out and helping us out there. Judge, come on up. Thank you for your help.
Thank you very much.
Judge, like you.
Thank you all very much for inviting me to participate, Mr. and Mrs. Solis, Commissioner and Mayor, and the City Council. It was my honor to go out there and assist the great city of Harlingen, who this city means a lot to me. So on behalf of myself and my court, my arms are wide open, my doors open for the city of Harlingen. Whatever we can do to assist the city of Harlingen, we're here to give you 30% of hard work and dedication. Thank you very much.
And we'll call Paquero.
Go ahead.
Thank you guys as well. Thank you for... Thank you. All right, Padilla, who's the director of the Dance Community Center.
I just want to say thank you also for inviting me and barely new with the Dance Community Center. We're a center that's dedicated to bringing culture to the young community because we feel sometimes there is a lack of that in our local schools to fill them with culture, so I'm here to enlighten them and share with them. So like the others have said, whenever we need any kind of culture, fight arts, involved in dance, I'm here with open arms to help out.
All right, thank you so much. Javier Canamio, is Javier here? There he is. If any of you missed any of these performances, they were all great, but I certainly enjoyed Javier's performance. They were just world class.
Thank you. And I'd like to say thank you to Juan and Connie Solis for inviting me and Commissioners in the city of Harlingen. And Harlingen is my home, and I've had the amazing opportunity to sail all around the world, and I can tell you for a fact that there's no place like home, so thank you all very much.
Carlos Camas, there. Always a performance with this absolutely fantastic...
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you. I grew up here, but I live in San Bernardino. I work, I sing for them over there. Started Choose by the Trail and Choose by the Tracks, and like I said, I grew up here.
Well, I grew up in San Bernardino.
I live here. Anytime you need something, thank you.
The next item is the proclamation proclaiming the month of June 2014 as National Homeownership Month. Would you like to invite them, Jeff? And all of us to receive this proclamation. Where's homeownership is the American dream, and it's close to the heart of Harlingen, Texas. There's no, there is a special power than neighborhood where most families own their homes. A new homeowner receives a key that does more than unlock a door. It represents a place where children can grow, learn, and feel safe, an opportunity to save money and build equity for the future, and a sense of stability and belonging to the greater community. Just as in built strong families, homeownership is the building block of strong communities. And whereas thanks to the prosperity of this nation has enjoyed over the past decade, more Americans are homeowners today than at any time in our history. As Mayor and as Commissioner, we are committed to helping more citizens, especially those who have been shut out in the past, no joy of the financial security and the sense of community that comes with owning your own home. Whereas the Department of Housing and Urban Development is working in partnership with state and local governments, community groups, and private sector to make the most effective use of federal funds through a combination of housing counseling, down payment assistance, closing cost assistance. And whereas through funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, we're helping our residents buy homes and live the lives that only most imagine. Whereas homeownership is good for the homebuyer. Harlingen and our country is the American dream, and during National Homeownership Month, we rededicate ourselves to that dream and to every American who seeks to achieve it. Therefore, I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2014 as National Homeownership Month. And the city of Harlingen call upon all citizens of the city to join me in recognizing the importance of providing every citizen with the opportunity to achieve the American dream. Is there anything you all want to say something?
Say thank you for allowing us to be able to help the community.
All right, well, we appreciate you bringing this to our attention and helping us to reemphasize the importance of these efforts and all of you here to help us across everyone at home. Thank you. Item four is the City Harlingen's Community Wide Trash Off Day, held on Saturday, May 24th, Psychocomplex parking lot. Going to have that presentation by our city manager.
Before we get to the presentation, Mayor, Commissioners, I wanted to thank Jeff Lacy and his kids who were out there most of the day when we had the Cinco de Mayo celebration cleaning up the placenta. So thank you, Jeff, and all of the employees at the Parks Department for helping out. We had the Community Wide Trash Off Day, the mayor said, on May 24th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at the Psychocomplex. We wanted to thank all the volunteers that made that happen. We had La Luz del Mundo Church, Cameron County, Juvenile Justice Department, plenty of volunteers that helped throughout the day. We had approximately 13.26 times of degrees that were picked, that were brought in by local citizens. You can see the volunteers in action there. And also, we collected a total of 140 tires, and you can see the pictures, a lot of tires that were brought in. Our next Community Trash Off Day will be held on August 23 of this year, and we've got some certificates that we're going to be handing out, especially to La Luz del Mundo Church, Tamayo Home for Volley, and Cameron County Juvenile Justice Department. Should we hand them out now, Mayor?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
Does anybody want to help me hand out the certificates?
Commissioner Leal, assist.
Sure. If you can say your name, I'll... Oh, okay, they're here. We'll find out. Samuel Sanchez?
Alejandro Soto?
Yes. Aziel Gonzal Gomez? Isai Levianos? His brother. And Dr. Samuel Joaquin Flores? That's where he was. Thank you. Thank you. Gabriel Rantell? Angel Rosales? Eduardo Mendoza? Isaac Torres? Eric Dimas? I think it's Isella Borax? Abel Meza? And Leslie Varejao? Okay, where they were the Juvenile Justice System, we'll make sure that gets presented to them. Thank you.
All right, thank you to everybody who participated in our trash off. These are important events for our community. It's important for us to keep our city clean and smart. Item five is the approval of the minutes from May 13th, a special meeting, and on May 21st, 2014, a regular meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the two minutes? And if not, can I hear a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, like, sign, motion carries. Item seven, this is a public hearing, and to take action to approve the one-year action plan, budget for fiscal year 2014-15 of the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG Program, fiscal year 2014-15, year 20 of the Home Investment Promotion Program. Tammy?
Good evening. Prior to the public hearing, I just wanted to give you a brief overview, the brief overview that already provided in your agenda packet. I gave you a lot of information so you could see how the determination was made in establishing the recommendation by the board. The board had six meetings prior to coming to the recommendation. This is the 40th year of CDVG and the 19th year, or the 20th year of the home program. History is in the makes right here, because never in the history have we been able to fund every single application for public services. And this is the first year that they were able to do that. We received about $3.5 million in requests. Had to cut about $2.5 million to get to the recommendation. Very grateful to the board and their dedicated selves that come to the meetings and meet with the agencies, and they are here to answer any questions that you have. I'm going to go over what their recommendations were. This year's CDVG allocation is $801,930. The home allocation is $234,912. It's anticipated that we're going to receive about $55,284 in program income from the Housing Rehab Program and $18,000 in old CDVG funds for the housing program. The recommendations to fund are to fund the CB Wood Park for $175,000, Ronald McDonald House for $5,000, Senior Companion Program for $20,300, Boys and Girls Club $48,300, Girl Scouts $6,900, Sunshine Haven $19,000, CASA $19,000, the Housing Rehab Program $252,430, Housing Rehab Admin $96,000, General Administration $160,000 for $803,930. For the Home Affordable Housing Program, we only received one CHODO applicant, that's HCDC, is our housing partner. We're going to fund them $234,912, $23,000 is for admin, our total $257,912. Those are our funding allocations. If you want to open the public hearing, and I'll answer any questions.
I have a question. In previous years, we've gotten less and less from the federal government. Is that trend continued this year?
Yes, actually, this year, I think it was $9,000 that we received. An increase in $9,000 in home, but a $26,000 decrease in CDVG once again. So if you go, yeah, 2002, we were getting almost $2 million, and now where are we going?
So this year was a relatively small cut.
$26,000, which on our budget, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there one that's against the action plan? Open the public hearing. Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing, and this is approved. I would like, I would like to say that I was really glad to see, and I thank all the CDVG board members who are here. If you're here, stand up, and we'd like to recognize you, CDVG board members who, they worked very hard to try to figure out where these funds are going to be taken. I was particularly happy to see the allocation for CB Wood Park. That's a great, that's a great little park and an area of our community. It is at the end of the Arroyo Walking Trail, it's got access to the Arroyo Walking Trail, and it's just, a lot of people don't know about that park, but it's a wayfinding signage so that people can get to it, because it's a wonderful park and one of our more historic areas of the community. Is there a motion to approve the action plan?
Make the motion. I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, like, sign, motion carries. All right, again, thank you to CDVG. Eight is to consider and take action to authorize the Community Development Director to negotiate the price for aquatic engineering design and construction management services for Long Sea Hill Pool renovation at the most qualified firm, the Brandon Corporation, and authorize the city manager to execute contract negotiation of the price.
Good evening. We received, we actually sent out for qualifications for this project. We sent out 35, we received two back. We've looked at those, staff evaluated them, we provided you with their evaluation scores, so we would like to negotiate a price with Brandon Corporation for the Long Sea Hill Pool. Just to note, renovations will not be undertaken until after this summer season, because there's about 230 kids that go there a day, so we're going to wait, go through the design in the summer, and then they'll ready for construction in the early fall.
I'd like to say, I've gotten lots of calls and complaints and concerns about the quality of the pool and the filter system, and this is like way overdue, and everybody will benefit from it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to authorize the director to negotiate the price?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, like, sign, motion carries. Item nine, consider to take action to approve an ordinance on first reading to amend the City Harlingen's question for fiscal year 2013-14. LPA.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. This amendment is needed to account for grants that were awarded after the fiscal year ended. It also adjusts in balances of grants at the time that we adopt the budget, those balances are not known yet until the year ends, and that's what we do with this adjustment. We also adjust the budget for prior year encumbrances that were encumbered but not expended prior to September 30th. We bring forward the balances and we adjust the budget accordingly. In the packet, you have a list by fund of each of the adjustments. And also in Exhibit A, we have all the funds listed with the revised budget revenues and expenditures and the amended, your imbalance, I'm sorry, that is estimated. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any specific, on any specific amendment.
Could you read the caption?
Noreen's amending the revenue and expenditure budget of the city of Harlingen, Texas for the fiscal year October 1st, 2013 through September 30th, 2014. Total budget revenues will increase to $66,806,838, and total budget expenditures will increase to $70,104,361 respectively, providing for publication of the caption disorder and ordaining other matters related to the portfolio.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, like, sign, this is sort of a housekeeping thing.
Yes, sir. You know, in the past, we've done like a mid-year budget workshop and all that, and now we just bring you an adjustment when we need it. We'll probably have to come forward again. We have a couple of grants that we've been awarded since we prepared this one, and so we'll bring those to you later. It'll be both revenues and expenditures, we'll make a change in fund balancing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to meeting with you more often over the summer.
Yes.
All right, item 10, board appointments.
I want to trade that on the construction board adjustment by mountain for the Poliers and Esport Boys to break up.
This one.
You want to hand this, the evidence out? I have a few, report the mayor to the audit committee, report Mike, that's more to the audit committee, report Michael Lamb to the audit committee, report Nick Consiglio to the orange advisory board. Is there a motion to approve the board appointments?
I'll make that a motion that'll be a couple more.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, like, sign, motion carries. Item 16, communication?
No.
Darn, that's 30 minutes into our first 30-minute meeting.
(laughing) In a decade.
16 years. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes... Is there a motion to approve the board appointments?
I'll make that a motion that be
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like signed, motion carries. Item 11, citizens communication? Darn, this is 30 minutes in our first 30-minute meeting.
In decades.
Sixteen years. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our business tonight. We thank you all for being here. Good night.
Shaka.